On May 2nd Franklin Planning Board members heard from Jonah Shaw, owner of the former Treadwell School and his possible plans for development.
Jonah, Jonah Shaw, former Treadwell School.
Did you doze off on us?
Well, no, I just saw other people. They're just...
Yes, they're just attendees.
Yeah, so you got many...
We're interested in what's your plan there.
Okay, well, um...
Just a little background, Jonah was here, I don't know, maybe six months ago? Was it longer than that?
A little bit longer.
Okay.
You were under the meat, right? Or smoking and...
Yeah, yeah, right.
He owns the Treadwell School.
Yes, Greg, you're great, dude.
Yeah, so he reached out to me on Tuesday. And proposed all this to me Tuesday.
We haven't heard anything.
And I called Kent and I said, Kent, I said... He threw a lot of information at me I didn't know anything about, so, uh...
He didn't even know where Treadwell was.
Yes. I just, I weren't formally really putting him on the agenda, but I had asked if he could come in, discuss things with us together, so we can make sure we all know what's going on here. So we can make sure he can do what he wants to do.
Right, so I guess there's two things that I'm trying to find out. One is, I think that right now it's zoned as manufacturing from the previous owner, correct?
So the permit allowance, I believe, was like light manufacturing. That special use permit has run its course because it's not been in use.
Okay.
As far as the zoning, it's the hamlet zoning, which allows that light manufacturing, as well as a number of other uses.
Okay, so, so it's not zoned for anything at the moment?
It's the hamlet zoning, it allows a range of residential and commercial uses.
Oh, so it's zoned for that, but it's not...
It doesn't have an active special permit.
Okay.
You have to get through that to go through the permit.
Okay, and that's with you or with...
That's with this planning board, yeah.
Okay, so, I guess the question, I wanted to, after speaking to Greg, I think what I'm after is a mixed-use permit or zone or...
A couple of uses. I think the board had talked about...
Is it a permit or a...
You'd be looking for a special use permit
Special use permit.
That would encompass whatever you're using the property for. Which I think this board had talked about, you know, due to the size of the structure, that it was likely that there could be, you know, but understanding that parking and the site has to support all this there, just because it's a big building, so that's gymnasium, you know what I mean? It's gotta all work for what's there.
So currently, the plan, which is, you know, I think, you know, having had a year to work on ideas is, I think, we discussed that I have the business in Delhi right now, which is the USDA, FDA, we make meat and fish products. So gonna move that out there. The same company, we've filed for a cannabis processing permit with the cannabis board. And we would do that as well in the same area of the building. Basically looking to use the kitchen and cafeteria area, which is where all of the grease traps and the main drainage into the septic fields are. There's three septic fields there actually that are on some kind of a system that switches back and forth. We found out a lot this past year. So, and then, um...
So no cultivation, you're talking processing of product there?
Exactly, so, um, the, basically, everything would be food items, which, you know, the company's Catskill Food Company. That's the company that's moving there would be doing all of those items.
And that would be basically manufacturing, actually, selling other than distributing?
Just, yeah, it's all wholesale, yeah.
The office cannabis management prohibits any kind of overlap.
Exactly.
If you grow it, you can't process it, you process it, you can't sell it. Kind of a money launderer type of...
They were, you know, they're trying to prevent vertical integration to prevent, I guess, the mob from throwing everything.
Money laundering, really, yeah.
So, the Delhi mafia, right?
Treadwell mafia.
Treadwell mafia. And then the other, the rest of the building, we wanna go forward with the kind of event retreat center, which I think you said would be classified as a hotel. But we would not be operating on a, you know, like, you can call and rent a room. It would be like you rent the whole building for a group. So, you know, we're not gonna...
Kind of like the conference center portion of a hotel.
Exactly.
So it would be motel, hotel motel resort we have.
Yes, yes, that's all one use.
Gotcha.
So the light manufacturing and then hotel motel.
So you would have enough people staying overnight?
Yeah, so basically the idea is the classrooms would be converted into accommodations. And at this point, we keep it very simple. Each classroom would be one room. It would be a giant room because they're about twice the size of this.
But you have to grow them long-term, you're growing short-term.
Yeah, a week long.
Yep.
You previously said they would rent the whole building, so that means you're not gonna have one room rented by one family and one room by another. It would be one group would rent the whole thing.
Yes, or, you know, like, I mean, be rented by families, but they would all be there for the same reason. So like, a wedding, you know, in the area, they would, you know, it's like if you've got, you know, 20 families, they could each rent a room. We might, you know, they think the technology will allow us to, you know, have people pay separately and book it, but someone would have to guarantee the booking for the group.
You know how you drive through Treadwell and, oh, let me get a room for the night? It's gonna be a pre-planned event.
It's gonna be closed and inactive unless there's a group renting it.
When you say events, would there be events, would it just be the lodging component of it? Or would you have events there on the premises as well?
Events, yeah, like, kind of like a mini convention center, like you said.
Okay, but outside, inside, it could be, that's something you're thinking about?
Yeah, like, it could be a yoga retreat. You know, it's like some yoga person wants to, you know, bring, you know, sell the weekend.
The Google execs wanna come to Treadwell for the weekend, they could rent the building and have team building exercises and whatnot.
Exactly.
How large are your outside grounds?
The total grounds are five and a half acres. And then the, the town of Franklin owns the...
The Treadwell.
Yeah, I'm just asking if you have, so you're planning on possibly having events outside on your five and a half acres?
Yeah, and people would have access to the grounds.
What about the ground, Treadwell grounds?
Well, I've been to several meetings with the Kellogg Foundation and, you know, we've discussed the possibility of using them as a way that they could, you know, make money, but there's nothing that we...
Right, I guess why I was worried about they just not turning people loose on their property.
Oh, no, no.
Without permission and...
No, no, no.
I mean, the difficult part about that is it is public.
Right.
But Jonah's engaged with them to, you know, they're gonna rent for the weekend or something like that, that you would have some kind of agreement.
Yeah, and then the goal would be to try to make it financially lucrative for the foundation, to, you know, but at the same time preserve the access for the public that everyone's used to. So it wouldn't be like, oh, you know, we've booked the whole place for the summer and we've, you know...
No picket wall for anybody, yeah.
Right, exactly, no, the idea is there would be, you know, it's like, alright, maybe they wanna play a soccer game or a softball game on the field. So, okay, great, I mean, honestly, the fields there, as beautiful as they are, they're severely underused.
But something like, say, if that was the case, Kellogg Foundation could put out a notice and say, hey, you know, for this weekend, the basketball courts, the playground are open, but we've reserved, you know, it's a private party or whatever, that's up to them.
Which they do now anyway.
They do for birthday parties and things, yeah.
And, but, you know, we've been talking about the fact that I think they rented for like $50 a show. The hope is of that.
Get a little bit more money.
Yes, exactly. So, I guess the, so question one is, over the uses, what do I have to do to apply for the...
So there's two, there's two uses or three uses here? So I heard you say that the meat processing, and you told me the meat processing involved smoking and, what'd you say, cooking and smoking? And, I mean, what were exactly the, the...
Processed.
The process of the meat thing?
Um, I mean, we have a range of products. We probably have 50 or 60 products. A lot of them are raw, like sausage, steaks, chops, you know, it's like a butcher shop.
So you're butchering there too? I mean, I'm just curious how this, uh...
We don't slaughter, but we do...
But you're bringing in like cattle?
We sometimes bring in carcasses, sometimes we bring in box meat. But, you know, like, this week, we did 2,000 pounds of bacon. We bring a combo bin of pork bellies in.
Okay.
Next week, we're doing 2,000 pounds of sausage. We've got a giant 2,000 box of pork shoulders coming. So it really depends, but we do smoking of beef, pork, fish.
Where's your facility now?
In Delhi.
I know, but where?
Oh, 53 Main Street.
It costs a family dollar.
Oh.
He said it was right in town. My concern when I talked to him was, we told you about, we had a barbecue place.
Order and smoke, yeah.
The smoke, people were offended by the smell of barbecue chicken and, huh? Yeah, I...
I think the advantage, like living up downwind from Brooks's.
The advantage to Jonah, and I'll correct me, but is that you're gonna be moving your operation, so as far as the equipment and scale, you have an understanding of what that produces now as far as like your rendering needs and things like that or...
Yeah, yeah, I mean, you guys can come visit when it's operational. It's, it's a very technologically advanced smoker. It's inside, it's in town, and it's, it runs on, like, the smoke is generated from sawdust. It, you know, if anything, it smells like a wood burning stove and it puts off much less smoke than that. It, you know, it releases, when we're going full bore, it releases bursts of smoke like every five minutes or something.
So you would also be catering your events?
I'm sorry?
Would you also be catering your events? Like food?
Like, what do you mean by...
Okay, you've got, you've got 10 rooms for the people and they're having a wedding.
Oh, would we, I mean, if they wanted to hire or, like, so I have the restaurant slash store in Delhi. I wouldn't require that, but that would be...
But meals would be, like, somebody could have a meal there with a wedding?
Yeah.
Or a conference?
But in other words, they'd bring in a caterer in?
Yeah, and it might be me, but it could also be Brooks Barbecue or...
Whatever the outfit.
Stone Wall Estates or...
But you wouldn't be cooking on-site for your event?
I haven't really thought about it. I mean, I guess you could, there's a full kitchen there, but I mean...
Not so much you can or you can't, I think Teddy's just, you know, I know you're here just pulling an narrative on this.
I'm not making a suggestion, I'm just wondering.
But all of these details, you know, you're gonna have a heck of a narrative that kinda spells out, again, your plan and then, you know, getting back to your initial question. The special use permit requires a site plan review, so that's gonna be the entire premises, showing your parking spaces, showing what portions of the building would be used for what.
Yep.
And, you know, any kind of signage, and I can help you through the code where it spells all that out. Where to go through the list and make sure what applies, but, right Greg? I mean, but as far as the uses... So I was going through with him on the phone, I mean, with the uses he's been described and there's gonna be fire separations required between the uses. So I don't know if the building was set up as an institutional use, if it has certain fire areas, firewalls, I mean, we'd have to, we'd have to sort all that out. That's why I was trying to determine the uses first. So we're gonna do the light manufacturing or wholesale, and then you mentioned cannabis too. So both of those would be the processing? The food company would be doing cannabis and meats?
And the kitchen area.
Yeah.
And they could be done in the same area of the building? I mean, there's no separation flyers between cannabis and USDA? Oh, I don't know. Maybe they could smoke the bacon with this.
Can the cannabis processing and...
That's what I'm curious, so the cannabis, and you told me that you were possibly could do that in the kitchen area or something.
Kitchen cafeteria area.
Kitchen cafeteria area would be the manufacturing.
Yeah.
The hotel resort area would encompass how many rooms approximately? Do you have an idea?
I can, do you wanna look at the map of the building? Like, go ahead.
Yeah, I just, just so like... These are things certainly you'll refine too, Jonah. So you say, we're gonna rent 15 rooms, we're gonna rent 10 rooms.
I mean, like, conference room would be like the bigger rooms, like the gymnasium or something like that, right?
That's right.
I got it.
Yeah, so I can get a visual of what the building is.
So...
And I think that, you know, Greg's point is ultimately you would, you know, there're gonna be code requirements, but if he's willing to give you some insight in advance, it makes your life a lot easier, because we can approve, this board can approve it, but then you're gonna have to put the double firewall wherever that needs to be as per Greg. I mean, something might, something we might bring up now will affect, you know, it may be a hundred thousand dollar cost because you wanna do this. And if that's a service that you're, you know, like, your input upfront would be valuable, sure.
Yes, exactly, so, this is the gym, you can tell that.
This is enclosed?
Everything's enclosed.
Okay.
These, this wing connects there, I don't know why it's pulled apart.
So this is a connect, this is connected to it?
This is connected, yeah, that's the hallway which joins that hallway there.
Okay.
So this is the cafeteria and kitchen here.
Okay.
Alright, so this is...
This is where you would be doing your, your...
Yep.
Is this area big enough for you to do everything you need to do here?
Yes, at least to start with, I mean, right now we're, we've got 500 square feet and this is about 3,000, so we're...
Okay.
Well, this would be the apartment area.
Well, that'd be, I mean, we wanna keep the gym as a gym. So that we can do community stuff. You know, the basketball coaches from our academy have been talking about, you know, doing summer practices there. It's, we spent the year, the place was left a disaster. So we spent the summer cleaning it out and getting rid of stuff. There's still, we've got a bunch of stuff in the gym and the cafeteria now. All the rest of it has pretty much been cleaned and empty. But we're gonna have a tag sale giveaway coming up to try to get rid of the rest of this.
But all those ideas, Jonah, even something like the basketball, you know, if there's a space and, you know, whether you number it on this or you have a different drawing, just indicate like, you know, this could be available for rent or for use by such and such. Just try to really be transparent.
So then these are all the classrooms, this is the library, this is the gathering space. So the one, this here is where the offices were, the principal, counselor, secretaries. So this area could, you know, potentially be like double usage, like offices for the production, but also offices for running the hotel. So I don't know how that...
That's more or less how you wanna run your business. I think Greg's point is, A, the sensitive uses that... Yeah, so where's the, where's the hotel, the guest quarters gonna be?
It's like from here over.
In reference to, and this is a single-story building, building two stories?
Yep, also a building.
All single-story?
So it's like there's a corridor that goes through the whole thing.
Okay.
And, I mean, just like you said the last guy...
There's corridors right here in this area.
Yeah, probably, I'm assuming there's...
There's not anymore. If there were, they're not, they're not.
Oh, okay.
But, so, yeah, this...
Yeah, so this area would have to somehow be set by separate...
Well, probably, you know, I mean, this is all closed off, there's a door there, but we were, we're gonna put like a solid door there. So that would kinda lock off that wing from anyone.
I can't see what you're looking at, I'm just, is the kitchen, is this the kitchen?
This is, yeah, that's the kitchen and cafeteria.
So they can block this wing off?
Well, right there is a big opening. So that would, we were thinking of blocking that off. Then there's access to the gym, like this is the corridor.
Right, right, and then there's...
That would be the lodge, maybe, on either side.
That's the big round gathering room right when you walk in, it's my favorite room.
So if you're gonna rent these out?
Yeah.
And we're...
Is it standing room with doors? Oh, this is the library.
Sylo?
Depending on the use.
Gotcha.
Okay.
So don't you get some ideas, a square footage, like the general, the average rooms? Try to get some details?
They're about 950, yeah.
And just...
They're right there.
But just detail it all out, you know, I mean, don't throw it at us as verbally, just put it all in there. Like I said, I can help remind you of these things too as you're preparing it.
I mean, I was surprised that there were, you know, he, you know, he called, he's like, "Oh, there's a meeting," and I was like, "Okay, well, I'll come."
Sure, that's great, get some initial, I mean, why go through all the, even just your pre-planning until you have some confidence of where you're going?
I just said it, just to clarify, so this you're gonna keep as a gym, so the area that you're thinking of weddings and events would be there?
No, this is all the production.
I know, that's what I was wondering, is if you're gonna have to clean up your production?
Oh, no, no.
Where's the wedding part?
It'd be in a tent or something outside, probably.
It could be outside, I mean, it could be in a...
I don't know how big this place is. That circular, that circular room there?
Yeah, it could be...
As far as outside goes, you're gonna have to think about where you would let somebody put a tent?
I don't think there's anywhere to put a tent. I mean, can you put, you can't put it on the Leach Field, can you?
I don't know.
The Leach Field?
I doubt it.
Yeah, I don't think you would put it...
Parking a lot of it.
Yeah.
Okay.
I mean, that's really...
Cause concern might be if there's gonna be something outside, it's gonna be more of the, you know, it's from a neighborhood concern generally, it's outdoor use. There's gonna be music outside or something like that.
Right. I mean, that's really, the focus now is production.
Okay.
And trying to figure out, use the rest of it as a way to try to cover costs.
You can always come back and ask for more.
Yeah.
It's just a matter of, if there's something you're really banking on, you know, if you're gonna do it, put it on the plan so that this board can consider the impact. So what, we didn't get, actually, I'm sorry to cut you off, the amount of guests. So, so what, how many guest quarters are gonna be there, each one's a room?
Yeah, there's like...
One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, 10, 11, 12, 12, 13, 14 rooms maybe?
Yeah.
Give or take, okay, 14 rooms, yeah.
We might do some small ones with like these little rooms here or something, but, yeah, around 14. I mean, they could have, you know, it could be a parent couple with two kids in there.
Yeah, okay, so, alright.
Yeah, could be four in a room or something.
We're talking under 100 occupants altogether essentially?
Yeah, I think the occupancy for that room alone...
Oh, this occupancy is probably 600 or something?
Probably, I'd say probably 1,500.
1,500, okay.
For standing room, I think you'd need...
Five per, five square foot?
Yeah, that's 9,600 square feet. So...
It's big. Yeah, okay. And that's the uniqueness of this property is that it is so large, you know? I don't know how much the previous special use permit, so like we talked about on the phone, the previous special use permit was for ginseng processing, drying and mushroom growing. Same, and processing, so it's a, although the product's different, it's a very similar use. But again, that special use permit has expired and Jonah's certainly adding the, you know, expanding the range of use there.
And what, what would the process, did that need a firewall that holds that?
That's something you guys would get into. It wasn't separating it from another use.
Oh, another use, I got it.
In other words, if you're only using the...
If you're only processing, that's fine if you get a...
Mostly the process of firewalls is to save lives. It's, it's the amount of people and to save lives, give people time. If there was a fire to start in the processing area, the kitchen, it would give it an hour separation before the fire could spread to the hotel section, so...
I mean, the whole thing is block concrete and cord concrete.
Correct, so it's a, it's a, it's a non-combustible building.
And every room has a door to the outside almost.
Oh, wow. But the process would be that the special use permit would be a conceptual design that this board would look through. If it's approved, once building permits are filed, that's where the code, construction plans, all of that, that Greg would require. What I was talking about before was just, you know, knowing in advance, it could save the applicant and everybody a lot of headache to arrange it a certain different way just to make sure that, to avoid the need to put in a...
Like somebody wants...
Because if the building was a three-story building, one sprinkler, if you made it into a hotel, you'd have to sprinkle the whole thing, so that would be a $500,000 cost. So it'd be, you might change your mind about coming with the application if that's the case. And that's a, a great benefit. Get all this, all this off the table now, so we know where we're headed, so...
So can we schedule a meeting where you could come?
Yeah, do like the last gentleman, you got my phone number, call me, we'll meet together out there and I'll go walk through the facility. And then once you get some plans together...
Where's his facility in Delhi to actually happen?
This might be an ignorant question, but I know, so, I know we talked about the smoke and all of that, but the cannabis part, it doesn't smell like a cannabis farm, does it? Cause that really smells.
No, no, most of the products are made using distillate, which is like, they...
It's a different process.
Right, well, there's three levels of processing that they're issuing license. One is like extraction, where they buy the flower from the farms and they extract the various chemicals out of it. And then level two, and that requires like a ton of million-dollar equipment. And then next level is using that distillate to make the products. And, and that's just, you basically follow in like a bakery recipe or whatever.
I think we want you, we want you speaking to security, all of that stuff in there, not just for that, but for the whole facility, that's another thing to think of too.
Yeah.
I've heard there's a lot of robberies with the, with these facilities, with the cannabis? A lot more so with the dispensaries.
I think that's a dispensary.
Cause they can't deposit their money, I was told, I don't know. Yeah, this'll be a different thing, so he would be, yeah, this would be, you know, and again, as you recall, Franklin, you know, opted out of dispensaries and, I think, cultivation. But this does not apply to that.
Okay.
I mean, OCM will tell him if it didn't, it's just like, you know...
I mean, there's, yeah, there's a website that shows every county and municipality, but I don't think anyone's gonna... You can't opt out of the processing.
Yeah, that's right, it's just like a, yeah, other processing now.
Right. So again, and then part of the application, which I mentioned on the phone, is I need to get a CO for the building, so I don't know what the, if the building has one.
I had one time.
So the building was built, you said 90s maybe?
Yeah.
So it would probably have a CO if it was built in the 90s. If it was built earlier than that, it wouldn't have a 90s, it wouldn't have a CO. If you wanted to get, you can't give out a current CO. In other words, I just don't go to a building and give out a CO. A CO is coordinated with a building permit. If you were to, if you were to do renovations to the entire building, then I would give you a certificate of occupancy after the renovations are complete. But I'll look for, I'll look for a few, for past COs. Cause we can find the one that's there, he knows where he's at at least to start.
Would his school have a certificate of occupancy or would that be built differently?
No, the school wouldn't.
And that's what was built then?
Yeah, so it was built, yeah, the school would have had, the building would have had a certificate of occupancy. Someone would have filed somewhere, maybe. Pre, pre 75, 78, 75, there would be no COs. No, this was definitely built, we know when it was built. And then going back, there would be no COs, but...
So this was 95 when it was commissioned.
Okay.
Yeah.
And at that time, it would have been under, it would have been, it wouldn't have felt, fallen under our regulations. With the Department of Education. So the Department of Education may have a CO for the building, so we'd have to, we have to do...
New York State?
Yeah, New York State Department of Ed does the, does, would have been doing all the inspections. I would check with DA though.
The CO would be separate from the...
Lisa Glasskey or somebody that might have that.
Because school kids and they're...
Correct.
They've found some stuff and other stuff they have.
But the building would still, the building itself would have a certificate of occupancy and it would just be through the Department of Ed, but... But having that CO is not necessarily a component of starting the planning board review and ultimately, once there's some construction done there, that's when there would be... Yeah, but he needs a CO probably for someone, the government agencies to allow him to do it.
But he needs a CO probably for some one of the government agencies to allow them to do this building, so. I run into this all the time with, uh, with schools like Headstarts and stuff like that. They look for COs and they're reusing buildings that were from the fifties and-
Really groom homes and things like that, yeah.
Yes, and we don't have, we don't have COs, and they're like, well, just issue us one, and it's like, it's not that easy, so.
So, say we can't find one, and you wanna see, you know, the, the building permit completed before you would issue one?
So we would have to somehow-
Have it issued in two parts, like, cause the, the processing area, you know, that's not gonna take long to get going, because, you know, it's just basically just moving equipment and then building whatever walls you want me to build.
We're probably gonna give you a permit, the town would probably issue you a permit for the, the, uh, the use. In other words, we would be making it co-compliant to the use you're doing it, and, and making sure all the applicable fire separations are in place and stuff like that.
Which would be sufficient for the use that he's applying.
So then I can say that, then I can issue a permit for that and give you a certificate of occupancy for that use, for that use, that it complies for that.
And then when the hotel part is built, then you guys, okay, cause that's gonna take longer.
But, yes.
Okay.
And think about construction scheduling too.
Yeah.
Include that to the best you can.
Okay. Is the, is the application online?
Uh, I can email it to you if that's easier, you can fill it out as a PDF.
Okay, yeah.
I would like a paper copy, I have one here too. So you can take a look at it.
Take a look.
Something to think about. And then there'll be an environmental assessment form as well, which I can, uh, you can fill out online, or I can give you copies of this one.
Assessing what part of the environment?
So every time they make an action, um, the special permit approval, they're required to satisfy the State Environmental Quality Review Act, which is everything from community impacts, to, to the endangered species, wetlands, the whole deal. So, they're gonna go through and see if your action is going to create a significant adverse environmental impact. They do it for the subdivisions, they do it for any of the uses.
Okay, but for not doing anything outside, it shouldn't really affect?
No, I mean, something like, um, if there was like a big traffic issue as a result of what you're proposing, if there was a noise issue or an odor issue as a result of what you're proposing, uh, if something came out, it would work at the public hearing that, you know, somehow there's some issue that needs to be explored. There's an endangered species there that we, you know, you're not building anything, so largely that would probably not be a factor, but it would still go through that process to get a letter from that agency to say-
Gotcha.
Yes, it's present, but there's no impacts as a result of no construction.
Okay.
But it's really just a procedural thing, it's not because this application, it's every application they approve.
Okay. Alright, any other questions?
Oh, um, a men, a question. Uh, you talked about using, maybe using the parkland around the building? That's owned by the town, and at the moment, Treadwell is seriously considering rebuilding their water system. And if they would rebuild it, it would be on the parkland. So they would be putting wells, reservoir, chlorination plant on that property. So that might severely cut into the amount of land there that would be available.
Yeah, I've been to the water meeting, see, the people in Treadwell don't want that, but we'll see what happens.
And I think, I think what we talked about, you're not proposing on, on using any of the town land for your use other than what the amenities that are on it now.
Yeah, exactly.
Access to the playground, access to the fields or whatever.
Exactly, yeah. It's just, you know, it could be a win-win situation, but not, uh, certainly doesn't change what our plans are at all.
I know when we approved the, uh, other businesses there, um, depending on how much water you're gonna use compared to what it was, was used for the school, I don't know how much was used for the school, but if they're redoing their, their water supply, you know, donation to that would hurt any.
Right, we also have discussed the possibility of putting our own well there too. Um, but, I mean, that was a year-round with, you know, like, a hundred, you know, it was, I think, a hundred people at least there every day, and this would be, you know, much, much less.
No, I know, you know, I mean, I think try to get, um, you know, whether you get an engineer to give you an estimate of, there's formulas to, for hotels, all sorts of water usage, try to get a, a, an estimated water usage, and that'll just be part of the, that's a question in the secret forum, is it, you know, is there impact to local water supply? Is that way you can get an idea as to where that's at? I think it's good you've been attending the meetings, and somebody there can probably speak to capacity. I understand they have some issues with quality or-
They're putting all their meters and-
With the Kellogg Foundation, you would be using your, um, your fuels and whatever, would you have to get a certificate of insurance to cover if any of your guests injured on town or?
Uh, yeah, we would have our insurance policy blanket covered the whole area.
So you could have them as a home insurer?
Yeah.
Really, whatever they require, because they could, you know, they could, it's their land, they could ask for anything, you know, above and beyond, you know.